October twenty twenty four. If you would stand with me and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, while we're standing, I mean, I apologize. Can we have a moment of silence in remembrance of our friend and loyal servant, uh, this Senator, former Senator Earl Robinson, uh, passed away. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Um, while I have your attention, I want to acknowledge, um, the presence of, um, a couple of our guests. Um, we have Senator Banzant. Thank you, sir, for being here with us. Commissioner Allen, thank you, sir, for being with us. We appreciate your attendance. At this point, can we have a roll call so that we can confirm form?
We can. Chairman Suggs?
Present.
Dr. Woods?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
I am present. And I have Dr. McCullough. We have form.
Okay, thank you. We have an official meeting. I want to apologize in that moment of silence. I also wanted to acknowledge, um, the anniversary of nine eleven. Um, I know we all have had several acknowledgements of that during today. It's something that, uh, we all said we'll never forget. So I thank you for being here and acknowledging that. Um, at this point, I would like to move on to item number two, the approval of the agenda.
Start moving, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Second. Didn't move this second in any discussion on the motion. Hearing no discussion. Um, let's move on to item number three. Our, uh, get ready snapshots. And I'd like to invite Mrs. Winnington up.
Good evening, board members, members of the community, and those of you who are tuning in virtually. And I'll ask if you could turn the camera this way. Thank you. For those of you who have been taking the time to support our young people during the football season, it officially kicked off a couple of weeks ago. And this photo on the screen indicates a time where Dr. Stokes and Superintendent of the East Chicago Schools, Dr. Stephen Mornay, had a friendly wager that ensued along with our athletics directors, Mr. Hank Kylender and, um, Grayland over in East Chicago. And in that opening season game with Westside versus East Chicago, it was agreed upon that the winning team, um, would offer swag of the winning team to the non-winning team. I'm here to report to the board tonight that Westside Leadership Academy was victorious in our opening day. As I peer out into the audience, I notice that Dr. Stephen Mornay, East Chicago Superintendent, newly appointed, has joined us in good sportsmanship. Dr. Mornay, will you join us? Dr. Stokes, will you join us? For a special presentation. We also have our football coach here. Come on up, Mr. Boswell, representing our athletic director.
So first and foremost, I really appreciate the fact that superintendents, we can have fun as well when we go to ballgames. And we did have some fun.
We did have some fun.
Yeah. Despite, um, the fact that one of our scholars was injured. You know, it was a really, really fun game. With that being said, I told you when we were on the radio.
I might have mentioned that.
That I had something for you. So in this spirit, we did win the game.
This is my right silence.
Uh, I think it is.
This is right. This is right.
I think so. I think it is, so we gotta get our picture. You're supposed to put it on, really.
Jack it off, sweatshirt off.
This is how the Gary Red Cruz is.
You're ready.
Oh, man. Everything is off.
Oh, yeah, that's a purp. And he wore the blue slack.
Make sure you zoom in.
Thank you, Dr. R.
Thank you so much. Absolutely. I'm a man of my word.
So thank you so much. It's all in fun.
Absolutely. And then definitely. Wait till basketball season.
Oh, another challenge.
We'd also like to welcome you to the community.
Yes.
And, and thank you for being with us for it. And please let Jesse Gomez know that we won. We'll do. I'll send a text right now with the picture.
Moving along with one additional Gary snapshot, we'd like to highlight a special program that has been launched along our Science of Reading Program, a component of the Science of Reading titled UFLI, which stands for the University of Florida Literacy Assessment. I had the opportunity to head over to McCullough Academy last week and sit in on a classroom, which was being instructed, a kindergarten classroom, being instructed by Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Smith has groups of kindergartners who come in on a daily basis, and they are learning the basics of phonics through this program, UFLI. It imposes both the use of technology and good old fashioned phonics. If we go to this slide, you will see the students have their tablets. They have their headphones. They also have instruction with Miss Smith, and then they also have time to break into their groups to do individual additional studies, um, once the session is over. This program is being implemented as core study for grades K through three, and then for reinforcement purposes and enrichment purposes when needed, grades four through eight. Um, let's take a quick look at Miss Smith. And listen to me. I know you first, you're gonna follow me. Watch me, you're listening. And then you're watching my ear. Hmm, ah. Your turn. Me. All right? I put those sounds together. That's called blending. Let's do the next one. Listen to me. That was good. And I am pleased to report that our kindergarten teacher is here today. Mrs. Smith, would you please stand and wave to the crowd?
And they're already standing online. Good job, Miss Smith.
We just wanted the community to know some of the great things that are happening and how we are really, really focused on literacy in the district using the components of the science of reading. There will be more to come, but we just wanted to give you, as we call it, a Gary snapshot. Thank you so much, board, for indulging us. And I will turn it back over to you, President Suggs.
Thank you. Appreciate the update. At this point, I'd like to move on to item number four. Um, as we start with four point one, if Vice President could share the, um, public comments information process.
The Gary Community School Corpora- Gary Community School Corporation Board of Trustees welcomes comments from the community. As a result, the agenda for each regiment provides time for public expression. The period of public expression is limited to three minutes per individual and thirty minutes total discussion of items on the agenda or to express concerns relative to the operation of school setting, school board actions, and other items of general educational interest. If there are many people wishing to address the board, we may limit the amount of time a person may speak. Comments should be directed to the board, not to individual board members. Statements should not be abusive or argumentative. A person's making comments shall not debate statements made by other persons. It is not, it shall not be permissible to orally present or discuss complaints against individual employees of the Gary Community School Corporation at any board or school trustees meetings. Issues relating to personnel, individual circumstances, and/or an individual school will be referred to the building principal or appropriate administrator in an attempt to resolve an issue prior to an appeal before the board. Speaker cannot transfer the remaining time to another person. The board president will enforce these rules and may take actions necessary to maintain order at the meeting. Such actions may include but not limited to interrupting the speaker, stating this to lengthy, unduly repetitive, or otherwise violative rules. President may terminate the addressing these people or violate these rules. And President may not totally amount of time devoted to public comments if there's a large number of people wishing to address the board or if there's a large agenda of other business before the board.
Thank you, sir. And I just want to share with the individuals who have signed up that my appreciation for your compliance and observance of our policies. And let's get started. First name we have is Mr. Ernest Walton. And Mr. Walton is here to talk about our special education item.
Where's the Candace one? I'm not interested. Can you help? You sound protective. Yeah, I gotta get this. You might don't use the micro so that the sound can pick up for people at home. That might be difficult.
Perfect.
Okay. Uh, thank you, school board, and the people who are here. Uh, I wanted to also create a thank you for our service and also the nine eleven situation, uh, and the silence and the person who passed away. Um, I remember we were talking about that and for the silence. Darn it. I reached through one other person who appears no longer alive. So anyway, why I come here today, what I mean, I'm watching the school board, uh, with, you know, and all the technology and seeing what's happening here. I have a point of wanting to discuss special education. I have a real concern about this. I'm a father of children with special educational needs. I see that the special educational boards have not, um, or the staff in the department has not improved from the past. And basically, I want them to really improve and help out, uh, what is happening. I see the other students that aren't doing special ed very much, you know, things have improved greatly with the school system while I'm impressed and nice. You guys are doing a great job, except for this special educational program. So I'm kind of sad about the situation. Um, I was wondering about every year with the school and the special educational funds, where do those funds go to in a sense of spending within the school system? Um, do, you know, the kids don't seem to have, uh, the nice equipment that the other kids have. It seems like it's basically, uh, like the poor kids of the school system. It's really, it's ve- very sad. So I've been watching also the school, like, support. I would like to see the school support this special education. Okay, to cooperate. Uh, and whoever needs to get the special educational, uh, department and program up to date. So I was thinking, hmm. I have a daughter who's involved. Uh, she has trouble walking, and I've asked, you know, other people, like Westside, you know, what can I do to help my daughter? And they're like, I don't know, I don't know. To succeed. I, is that a cell? Can you continue? Thank you. So I don't have authority to set up anything or to really do what I want done. It's very difficult for me as a parent. So my older, older daughter, uh, before was, uh, you know, every year, Lou Wallace and was doing, you know, and special ed, we didn't do much there. So I wanted to set up, uh, for my other daughters, uh, for the, you know, make it easy to have access, um, to everything within the school system and the programs. And it just didn't seem right. Things just had been wrong. So my basic question is, I want to know where the funding goes to. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to acknowledge that we did adjust the time, uh, to give, um, respect to these passive sign languages of speaking directly, so that we're favorable there. Next, I'd like to go to Ms. Jenny Wetherham, who's here to talk about the cell tower proposal.
Good evening, school board, community. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I was not able to attend the last meeting. I do see that it was removed, um, and not placed on the agenda, uh, this week, although it had been suggested that you guys would be taking a vote this week. So thank you for letting me speak on it, even though it is not on this week's agenda. Um, I am here with a few hats. Um, by profession, I'm a school social worker. I am currently homeschooling my son, who, um, has a chronic health condition. Um, I am a board member of Gary Advocates for Responsible Development, whose mission is to ensure that development and projects in the city are, um, protective of human health as well as environmental integrity. And I am also a neighbor. I live adjacent to the Gary Middle School property, um, sort of directly, uh, Pike was to run through. I live at Hemlock and Pike, um, right where the cell tower would be positioned. So with all of those hats, I have concern about this proposal. I am hopeful that the omission of the cell tower from the agenda means that the board has listened to, um, feedback and, um, is looking to not move forward with this proposal, um, in which case I would, I would hope you guys would consider, uh, enacting a ban on cell towers in occupied schools in the district, um, like other school districts have, like in L.A. and Tumay Park, Naperville, Illinois. Um, if you are in deliberation still, um, then I would like to speak a few points, just for the record. Um, first is that FCC regulations, the group that monitors and regulates cell towers, they have not been updated since nineteen ninety-six. We all know that the technology has changed greatly since that time. So that is an area of concern. The regulations that are in existence do not look at cumulative impacts. Um, we know that in our city, there are many environmental sources of pollution, and this would add to the burden that many of our children face. And we know that environmental pollution often has an impact on learning. FCC regulations also do not consider children's neurological development and the fact that they are more susceptible to certain kinds of environmental pollutions and harms. Their brains are developing, their systems are developing. So this is a vulnerable population. Further, um, the community surrounding is also potentially at risk of, um, impacts from the cell towers. The locations that have been selected, one is immediately adjacent to the national park. One is next to a Shirley Heinz nature preserve. There is research that is suggestive of impacts, negative impacts on wildlife, such as bees and pollinators, tree canopy. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ms. Linda Collins, here also to speak on cell towers.
Good evening. Thank you, board. I do appreciate the time, uh, giving me to speak. I do not totally oppose the cell towers. My concern, the locations, you know, near the schools. That's, I, uh, children, we all love, and, um, we need to continue to look out for their best interests, which I trust that you will do. Now, I did, uh, do a little reading. Uh, and let me say too, that cellphone usage in Miller is really going to bad. Uh, you drop calls every time it go that way. Again, my concern is the proximity of the schools. That's number one. But I did, um, discover during my reading, I was concerned and wondered how, because this is radiation, I knew that. And I wondered how would it affect our young people? And I came to learn that, uh, the chance of cancer increases. Cellular stress, headaches, sleep issues, genetic damage, changes in product, uh, reproductive system, memory difficulties, and conditions involving the nervous system. Children are more vulnerable to radio frequency, uh, radiation. It affects our children greatly, and that's my concern. Um, and it's, uh, was already said about their developing brains and how it would affect them in that aspect. But I just, uh, ask you to continue to proceed with caution. You know, again, I am not opposing the cell towers. I just have a problem with the locations. And during my travels, you know, all around, um, and just recently driving as far as Louisiana, Birmingham, and all these places, I've noticed cell towers, but they're in fields. They're not in immediate proximity of any buildings or schools. So that's my only concern. Again, I do know that we need the, uh, cell towers, but, uh, I just don't like the location in which we're proposing to place them in. So thank you so very, very much, and I wish you well.
Dr. Spainwood Berg, um, here to speak on cellphone towers.
Good evening. Um, as you may see when I signed up, I actually circled quite a number of items in addition to cellphone towers. Um, but I, I too will say that the cellphone, cellphone tower issue, um, is of utmost importance because we really just don't have the research on how that affects kids' development. There's just not enough studies. And, uh, yeah, uh, given the amount of money that was discussed at last meeting, um, if we're affecting our kids and affecting their enrollment and things like that in our schools because we choose to go this route, we're gonna lose more money on this than we'll make. Um, I circled a number of items that were offered in terms of agenda items because none of these things are things that are actually posted anywhere where anyone can actually have any kind of ability to follow along or review ahead of time or anything like that. And, uh, I see that you're trying to get the board docs up and running in the way. And I see that in many ways, we've, including the cellphone towers, we, we kind of imitate our neighbors in Hammond, right? But at least they bother to put, even if it's same day, they put all the materials online so that people can actually look at what's being talked about. I think that's very important. Um, I also am really concerned about what a cumulative docket would be, given that this is, I've never seen that on a board meeting before that wasn't strictly legal. Um, are we in court? I mean, it gets a little strange. Um, I do appreciate, I want to appreciate that you took extra time for, for the translators. I appreciate that. I appreciated the attention to equity over, you know, being arbitrary. So thank you for that. Um, but I think that there definitely needs to be more transparency, especially because I'm pretty sure at last meeting we talked about this idea that the things that would be discussed or proposed would going to be posted. I looked on the site itself. I looked at the board docs. There's also not a link between the two, which makes it confusing. And, um, I found that there was just no way to do anything. And so if we can try to follow through a little bit better so that we can have meaningful input as a community, that would be fantastic. Uh, further, it was interesting because I knew there was a number of questions about the public comment itself, right? That preamble that is right ahead of time. I believe either privately, publicly, somehow, I think it was said that it was somehow some statewide kind of thing. I do see that you've borrowed some of the language from the SBOE, uh, but this is not a state board meeting, right? We are under O D L. And, uh, hopefully, we'll continue to pay attention to that. Um, because people do have the right to speak on anything pertinent. Thank you.
Mr. Quabell Russell?
Good afternoon, board. Appreciate being able to come up and speak for the board and the community. Um, and this is, uh, nine eleven, a day that we all, we appreciate that moment of silence that we all think about. We also need to think about and remember nine eleven, nineteen seventy-three, what happened in Chile, the sundown day, I end day, CIA coup d'etat that took them out. The U.S. wanted to control the copper industry for communications, which means it's right to, what type of communication? Well, I do more than the Delaware cell phones and cellular communication. And we don't need that in our schools. Um, the previous speakers, and even last week, spoke about a lot of the hills associated, a lot of the things that aren't, you know. Couple of things I thought interesting, how the FCC has opinion on it, and they haven't updated their research in decades and decades. And so when we hear stuff about FCC, we need to be very cautious in what they're doing because they work a lot of times on behalf of other corporations. It happens. We experienced that, and we're dealing with this music piece that we've struggled with so long with the horrific music that they play, especially for African children all around the country. FCC, again, they're not our friends, need to watch out for them. Um, I represent guard, a member of guard also, Black Lives Matter Gary. And just wanted to talk briefly about these hundreds of studies that are out there showing that these cell towers do harm. There's, um, resolutions in place in Los Angeles, Padaleto, places like in cities in Oregon and cities all around the country are limiting this or stopping this. In some places, they've even taken the cell towers that are up and taken them down, like in Terrytown, New York, places in Delaware. And rarely, they took down a seventy-five foot, uh, tower at St. John's College campus. There's fire stations that's, they're saying, we don't want cell, cell stations around us, cell towers around us. These are grown men and women. They don't want them around them, so we shouldn't have them around our children. Uh, the legacy of this new board coming in right after, uh, the school takeover, I think it should be, or we just reject this and also let me consider also passing a resolution for years to come, where we won't allow this. I see my brother in East Chicago, too. Hopefully, you can, you can take note of some of this stuff also if they try to come to y'all with some of this craziness. We don't need that in our, in our community, so. Um, so just wanted to share that. Also, even Michigan Tech, a public research university recommends that, again, current research shows that cell towers would be cautious in place at least five hundred meters away from schools, hospitals, and lots where sleep, people are sleeping. For instance, like where the people sleep at the fire stations. Also, I'd like to mention Guard, we're having a conference, our first conference coming up on the twentieth of September from ten to three thirties. And it's free, it's, it's pretty close to being full, but we would encourage me some students and some people, and our science teachers, whatever, to be there if they can. So go to W W W, GaryGuard219, GaryGuard219.org.
Mr. Robert Bugs.
Good evening, Dr. Stokes. I want to talk very fast, something's been said about the cell tower. But what I'm concerned about at the last meeting, one of the board members asked about, could the cell tower builder or owner negotiate his prices? And I just want to say that a child's health, you can't put a price on it. The money will go away, but the cancer will be forever. The other thing I want to talk about is, Mr. Walton came up when I was president of school board. He asked the administration time and time again, why don't they have sports and athletics for the special population students? Hopefully, y'all can answer that question for him, or he's been coming for years to answer that question. I think they deserve that. The other thing I want to talk about is the contract. Now, when this board hired the superintendent, who would they hire? They have an attorney to go with the contract with them. At Vegas School, they have a grandson that's going there, and they forced him to sign this contract. Didn't say, they didn't have any options. Now, the state already has provisions for expulsion, suspensions by statute, by state statute. So to have a grown person, system principal, a principal, to have a student to enter into a contract and sign, and if you violate this, then we can get this, we can just get rid of you because you signed. That is illegal. Now, I'm not a lawyer, but that is wrong. This is a Gary middle school student. The grown people are making them sign a contract. And if you don't follow it, you're out of here. So I think y'all should look at that very, very closely. The other thing I want to talk about is the, the agenda about who can say what, when, and where. I don't come here to be an adversary against y'all. But anytime that you tell somebody they have to stick to what I want you to talk about, that seems like it's being dictated to the public. But you have this in a public forum. And if there's anything, as I said before, the school authority, that we have some concerns about whether it be student, parent, or teacher, this is the only place that they can discuss it. It's not supposed to be no side of the school board standing up before or after the meeting. That's not professional. So I just want y'all to think about that. Please look into this contract. And Dr. Stokes, thank you for that very productive meeting yesterday with you and the staff. It was very informative and thank you very much.
Ms. Christine Sass.
Good afternoon. I've got more surprising things to say today. I'm thrilled about the U Fly program. I'm thrilled that the science reading stuff is getting used. I'm thrilled about some of the increase in the scores. I know that that's a good program from a, not from a huge publisher, so it didn't cost a ton of money. So I think that's all great. As for the cell tower, I, I'm more curious why it's not on the agenda because I looked online a few hours ago and I couldn't find an agenda at all. So I'd like to know how you're going to tell us when the agenda change. I, I agree with whoever said, it doesn't seem like it's being updated. I would like to say that I'm, I'm thrilled that there was somebody brought forward an opportunity for the school district to get money off the school tower. I think that's, you know, good initiative on somebody's part. I don't really care whether you do it or not. But I did think of something that I haven't heard anybody else mention was just that, that they want fifty years. And with the way schools have been closing, I'm afraid that what happens if we have, who's one of those, closing all those schools in ten years? And there's forty more years to go on the contract? And then who owns the building? And what if it goes to redevelopment? And that could be messy. And it seems like we'd be better off spending more time recruiting more students and getting more money that way than worrying about something like seventy thousand dollars a year from a cell tower.
Thanks to the public for your participation and your comments. We will now move on to item number five on our agenda, the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I need us to make a motion to approve the number five item under the consent agenda, five, one through five, six.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, then we have roll call for approval.
President Suggs?
Yes.
Dr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And I say yes, four to zero.
With a vote of four to zero, the consent agenda passes. At this point, I'm moving on to item number six. I'm going to go a little bit out of order. I'm going to go to item number six, two, then six, three, and then we'll move on to six, one. Dr. Stokes?
Thank you, President. Again, as you know, I've shared before that we are basically working with our policies and we have many of them. So the policies have gone out. When we get things finalized, they will be available for public view. But as you know, as a reminder, these are the board's policies. We just work to breathe life into the policies so that we can eventually have administrative guidelines. With that being said, if you can just go to our next slide, please. There are several slides that deal with the three thousand series. And what I want to say about the three thousand series is six point two is the first read for the professional staff templates. However, six point three is also the first read for support staff template. I'm telling you this because there is a lot of overlap, meaning that they're the same policies, just slightly different when you deal with professional staff versus support staff. So with that being said, what I'm going to do is to ask Mr. King, who is presenting our slides, if he could just show them up and you can kind of see the various topics. I may highlight a few, but most of the items are pretty standard and they haven't changed as much with regards to the law. So I'm just going to have him go through the three thousands for seven, I'm sorry, for six point two, and then we'll go through the four thousands for six point three. So if you can just do that and then I'll circle back. Okay? So four thousands, if you recall, actually deal with the support staff. So if you back up, I do want to highlight a couple of policies. For example, if you look at policy four, one, one, two, which is board staff communication, that same policy is also listed under three, one, one, two. It's the exact same policy for support and professional staff that deals with communication with the board. And essentially, what that policy is saying, and it's not intended to stop any conversation with the board, but it's more so intended to streamline processes and procedures with how staff deal with situations. We don't want to ever put our board in a situation where they're dealing with something that the school should be dealing with. So it basically states that, and I'll go straight to it and read it, we'll go to the four thousands and we'll go to the four, one, one, two. It basically says that all communication from staff members to the board or its committees shall be submitted through the superintendent. This procedure is not intended to deny any staff member the right to appeal to the board on important matters through established procedures. But it's basically just an official communication policy and directives of board of staff, interest and concerns shall be communicated through the superintendent. And what we're just doing is to make sure that we keep staff members fully informed as well as the board when necessary about problems or concerns and actions. So that is one policy that I did want to highlight. I also wanted to highlight policy forty, one, forty, which is similar to policy thirty, one, forty. Forty, one, forty talks about termination and resignation. And basically, it speaks to the fact that as superintendent, there's a misconception that I hire and fire. I make recommendations. I do make recommendations, but terminations are based on the board's vote. So I wanted to clarify that so that that misunderstanding is not out there. I do make recommendations to the board regarding staffing. However, the board's vote can terminate or hire any staff member from a position or to a position. Those are just the two I wanted to highlight. And with that, I'll turn it back over to our board president.
Thank you, Dr. Stokes. At this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Zabrowski.
Good evening, Gary Community School Board members, Dr. Stokes and community members. Welcome. What I'd like to do tonight is to go over the budget calendar. We are in the budget process right now. This is a process that takes months to actually do. And Senator Dalton actually prepared the budget for us. I have reviewed a lot of the Form four B line items that extract to the Form three, which is what we're going to present tonight along with the capital projects. So here is our schedule of our budget calendar. It's, it's a very strict timeline, so we have to stick with this. So our budget is approved by October, so it can be approved by the DLGF in November.
Just a moment.
Yes.
For, for the acronyms, can we say what those are for some people in the public?
Department of Local Government and Finance.
Oh, yes, Department of Local Government Finance. And Capital Projects is C P F. And I think that's it. And the seventeen eighty-two notice is the approved budget from the department, the DLGF. Now, I would like to present the Form three. So the Form three lists our actual public hearing will take place at our next board meeting on September twenty-fifth here at the Gary Career Area Center. And this is open to the public, so you are welcome to come. The approval meeting will be October ninth here at the Gary Area Career Center, five P M. Some things on the Form three to note, that these are our major funds. The property tax cap credit is money that we actually will not probably recoup, but the estimated operations max levy is thirty-one million. Senator Dalton may have some items he may want to talk about maybe at our next meeting to go over it. Our major funds, the referendum fund, the debt fund, the education fund, and the operation funds. Now, I'd like to list the capital projects plan. This is a tentative plan that our Gary Community School Corporation officers came up with. This is just a tentative plan. This, this is our focus right now, but it can be changed. This is not carved in stone, so please keep that in mind. Now, I would like to turn it back over to Mr. Suggs.
Thank you. Let's move to Dr. Stokes, who will present item number six point one. Excuse me. Seven point one.
Yes, Ms. Zabrowski, if you will, can you request permission for us to advertise our budget, please?
I respectfully ask the school board to approve the Form three and the capital projects plan to be publicly advertised.
Do you entertain a motion, please?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to advertise the twenty twenty-five budget, Form three, and capital projects.
I'll say that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, then we have roll call for approval.
President Suggs?
Yes.
Dr. Woods?
Yes.
Vice President Johnson?
Yes.
And I say yes, four to zero.
Voted four to zero, the motion carries. Permission to advertise the budget.
Thank you very much.
Let's move on with Dr. Stokes, her, item number seven point three.
So seven point three deals with the second reading of our student template. But before that, I do want to recognize that we have some, we want to request approval of our field trip experiences that we listed.
Let's move, excuse me, excuse me, seven point two, approval of the field experience, formerly known as field trips. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? May I have roll call for approval?
President Suggs?
Yes.
Dr. Woods?
Yes.
Vice President Johnson?
Yes.
And I say yes as well, four to zero.
Voted four to zero, the motion carries.
Okay, if you recall, and Mr. King, if you could put up our second reading, please. We talked at our last board meeting and we talked about student templates. So here again, we need to have a second review. So if you will, we're just going to list again. I talked about specific policies that are up here, but can you go to the next slide, please? But I just want us to look at the multiple policies that are in place that govern the supports and interactions for our students. If there is any policy that the board would like me to further expand upon, I'd be glad to do that at this time. If you can go back one slide, please. We'll let them look again. And go back to one more slide. If there is any policy that the board would like me to expand on, I will. If not, I will turn it back over to President Suggs for a vote, please.
Thank you. I'd like to pause and ask for our policy committee chair to share if there's anything in particular that you would like to share with the board.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. What I'd like to share is basically, just sort of reiterate the information that I mentioned at our last meeting, that I did take the opportunity to have a committee meeting and meet with the staff as regards to the policies. And they did a very thorough review. They answered any questions that were asked. And I was very satisfied. And I also have to say that most of the policies are very prescriptive and where they give you an opportunity to select a certain position, the staff actually explained why they select, made that selection. And it was satisfying to me and others that might have been in the room, so I'm very pleased with that. So by saying all of that, I say that I make a motion to approve this on second reading.
Is a motion on the floor? May I have a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. And we approve this policy in the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, then we have roll call for approval.
President Suggs?
Yes.
Dr. Woods?
Yes.
Vice President Johnson?
Yes.
And I say yes, it's four to zero.
Four to zero. The motion carries. Let's move on to item seven point four. Request for transfer funds. Seven, Zabrowski.
So if you can, we have another slide.
I would like to request this resolution to transfer money from the education fund to the operations fund. This is per statute, and this is something we actually probably should have done. This is per statute, and this is something we actually probably should have done earlier on, but we're doing it now. This helps subsidize some of the operational expenses that we have in the district. I respectfully request approval.
You may want to explain, so this is for Budget twenty-twenty-four, and this budget was approved, as it says, in October twenty-three. But explain to them a little bit more about why districts typically do this, and they typically do it earlier, like in May or June.
Yes, well, everybody, a normal school district would do this on a yearly basis during the budget time. The budget was approved, but the transfer, the resolution transfer was not written and approved. And the reason we have to do this is because, as you know, operational expenses continually go up. And the operations fund receives money only from tax, tax money, and from the education fund, from this transfer. So this is a necessity for us to subsidize all of the expenses that come through transportation, any building facility expenses that occur, our utilities. All of that comes out of the operations fund.
So I'll entertain a motion for the transfer of funds from education to operations.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to transfer of funds based on Resolution number two.
Is the motion on the floor, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the matter? Here is no discussion, may we have roll call for approval, please?
President Suggs?
Yes.
Dr. Woods?
Yes.
Vice President Johnson?
Yes.
And I say yes, four to zero.
Voted four to zero, the motion carries. Thank you. We're going to move on to item number eight on our agenda, and I'd like to invite Ms. Whittington to come back up front, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Stokes and community. It is my pleasure to call up Commissioner Kyle Allen, who will be making a special presentation, a check presentation, to the Athletics Department of the Gary Community School Corporation. He is also joined by our football coach, Alger Boswell III. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Ms. Whittington, and to the great coach of Westside High School with a three-and-old record and for a football award. Congratulations. Chairman Superintendent Stokes, Attorney Tolbert. First, thank you for having me. Sometimes government gets the opportunity to provide funding that sometimes that might not necessarily be available. And that is this case. Members of the athletic community at Westside High School, I approached them about resources in regards to support for our children. Our greatest asset, and we are supposed to be good shepherds, good parents, good examples for. Athletics can be a pathway for keeping children obviously out of trouble. Also, the possibility of providing them scholastically achievement and the ability to get an education. Needless to say, I would like to present to the school board, to the citizens of Gary, Indiana, to the parents of Westside High School and the athletic department, a donation from Lake County Government in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred fifty-two thousand.
I'd like to have board members come up for a photo, please.
Before you come, let me say this also, I mean, you can stand. This would not be possible without my fellow county commissioners, Jerry Tippie and Michael Repay, the county council generally, but I would also like to acknowledge Councilman Charlie Brown and Councilman Ron Brewer, without those two individuals who represent.
If you want to approach the.
And we're going to have our photo right here. Kyle, write us this right in this line. So that you won't be in the shadow. He's smiling.
Cheese.
One more. And.
Thank you. And again, thank you, everyone, and thank you for what you do. Because the school board is probably one of the most challenging, difficult positions you can have in elected local government, because obviously you are entrusted with children. And parents expect you to be a good shepherd, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Please share our gratitude with the other commissioners and the councilmen there in Lake County. Item number nine on our agenda, Mrs. Zabrowski.
So we would like to present the August financials, which was actually compiled by Mr. Dalton himself. So he would love to come up and present.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me back. I don't have a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar check for you, I'm sorry. I did see Dr. Bornet texting Commissioner Repay asking where his check is for East Chicago Schools. All right? Let's go over the financial report. You guys are kind of whittling me down. Linda's handling so much now that we're just down to me handling a couple small projects. But this is our cash balances by major funds, and then I collect all of all other funds. We are continuing to have a really good year. This year through August, we have a grand total of thirty-two million dollars in the combined funds, the consolidated funds. The education fund is doing well. We talked a little bit earlier about the operations fund, and Linda had you pass a resolution for the transfers that we're already making this year, and we'll be doing another one for next year, of course. And the reason is, the education fund gets all the money from state. And the operation fund only gets property taxes, and because of the circuit breaker, we don't get that much property taxes. We really need more funding to support the operations of the school corporation. So the education fund then transfers to support the operations. You go to the next slide. The education fund with its expenses by month, you'll see that August was a little bit higher as we got going again with school. You go to the next fund. Operations fund is kind of leveled off. Operations fund, we talked about a couple months ago, was running a little bit heavier than our original budget. So we'll probably be talking in November about additional appropriation to level that fund back out. Go ahead to the next referendum, pretty predictable. We take the referendum money, and we use it to support both the operations fund and the education fund, because that's why the taxpayers passed that referendum fund. I'll pause for questions. There was a brief report this month. If none, I'll have you back sometime.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the financial.
Subdue, Mr. President.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? Here is no discussion, may we have roll call for approval?
President Suggs?
Yes.
Dr. Woods?
Yes.
Vice President Johnson?
Yes.
And I say yes, four to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number ten on our agenda gives the opportunity for the board members to make comments or share reports. I'd like to open the floor for board members.
Mr. President, I don't know if he's still here, but our football coach was recently awarded Coach of the Week by the Indianapolis Colts.
Last week.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Just want to say how much we appreciate everybody being here today on September eleventh. We know the history of this day as well. In addition, I want to say how much we appreciate the support from the Lake County Commissioners as well. That's definitely something that we can use in our district. And we definitely appreciate the comments from our public to keep us informed about what they think as a whole. So that's something we definitely appreciate. And we appreciate everybody who's working to make a difference in the lives of our children in the district as a whole.
Thank you, sir. And I just want to echo those comments. As you heard from me one time or another, feedback is a gift. We don't need you to agree with us, but we need to know what's being said and what you're thinking, so that we can do what we can to support education here in Gary, Indiana. With that said, Superintendent, I'd like to go on to item number eleven and share with you.
Thank you so much.
If you can go to our next slide. I wanted to talk a little bit about student immunizations. If you can go to the next slide, please. I'm going to turn it over to Jelanka Spichkovich. She is our Director of Human Resources. But we want to basically give a call out to our parents about the importance of making sure your students have their immunizations. A day is coming very soon where if students don't have those immunizations, they may be excluded from school, but I'm going to let Ms. Spichkovich share that with you.
It's important to note that all of this is dictated by Indiana Code, and that Indiana Code is twenty dash thirty dash four dash two. And that code specifies for the state of Indiana immunization requirements in light of attacks, which again means that as of today, which is twenty days from the start of school, all students who attend have to have a minimum number of immunizations that are dictated again by the American Academy of Pediatrics. That regimen of immunizations include the DTAP, polio, hepatitis B, MMR, varicella, and hepatitis A. By today, students must have their immunization record, a religious waiver, or a medical exemption on file in order to remain in attendance. Those students who have not had those immunization records, a religious waiver, or a medical exemption on file as of today, will be receiving a letter explaining that they have to be excluded from school until such time. We are also though working with the Lake County Health Department. That number is two one nine seven five five three six five eight. Again, that's two one nine seven five five three six five eight. For those of us watching who would like to make an independent appointment or go to the Lake County Health Department to get the necessary immunizations done. We are also working with our school nurses to support parents who might have a difficult time getting their children to the health department. So the nurses will be providing a permission slip that if signed, once we receive ten permission slips, there will be a local unit that will come to our schools in order to get the necessary immunizations done for our children. If there are any questions regarding this, please reach out to your children's school and ask for your school nurse. Again, we are partnering with the Lake County Health Department to support our parents and our families to get these immunizations done in order to be compliant with the Indiana Code for attendance. Thank you.
Now I have a question, I have a comment. I just want to say how much I appreciate the work that's being done for that and the support that's given to parents. We know there are challenges for some families to get those immunizations, but having resources to help, transport, and help, it really makes a difference. So I appreciate the leadership that's shown by you all to make sure those gaps are being filled. Thank you.
You're welcome. So if we can pivot to our next slide, please. I'm going to turn this time over to Mrs. Whittington. She's going to share information regarding the conference that I was privileged to attend with two of my colleagues, Mrs. Wright and Mrs. Whittington. And we had a wonderful time, but it was just not a wonderful time. It was actually a time of learning and collaboration, so I'm going to let her share, please.
Good evening for a final time, Mr. Suggs, school board, Dr. Stokes, and community. And Dr. Stokes, thank you so much for the invitation and the opportunity to attend this conference on Sunday and Monday of this past week. The Gary Community School Corporation participated in the inaugural Administrators of Color Preparing for the Future Conference. It was held in Indianapolis, Indiana at the Weston on September eighth and ninth. Presented by the Indiana Association of Public School Superintendents, the conference was created to provide resources and networking opportunities for public school administrators of color, ranging from newer professionals to more veteran educators. And as you can see, if you go back to the first slide, this one, while in attendance, part of the panel included a legislative discussion with our legislators to talk about bills that impact the school districts and our young people. And there's Dr. Stokes pictured with many of our legislators. Dr. Vernon Smith was in attendance, Representative Earl Harris, Judge, and State Senator Lonnie Randolph, among others. And some of you may recall one of our longtime team members here in the district on the end, Serita Stevens, who is now the Deputy Superintendent of the South Bend Schools. In the bottom left corner, you may see a familiar face, our former athletic director, Robert Lee, who has now returned to his homeschool district down in Richmond, Indiana. We of course still consider him a member of our team, seeing that he's a Westside graduate. And then we were interacting in this photo with the keynote speaker for the morning, who was absolutely phenomenal. The conference featured topics on effective leadership, strategies for educating Black and Hispanic males, panel discussion, as I indicated, with Indiana legislators. Keynote speakers, there was a networking reception, awards luncheon, and vendor fair. And also Dr. Bornet, if we go to our next slide, is pictured at the reception with all of our local superintendents across the state. And I also like to give a special shout out to Dr. Sharon Johnson Shirley of the Lake Ridge Schools, who was on the planning committee for this inaugural affair. It was noted that this team met, a team of superintendents from different districts across the state, met weekly since December to get to this point here in September of twenty-twenty-four. It was beneficial for us all. And I sent out a press release regarding our participation, and we're already starting to get media coverage. We also laid eyes on your brother, Mr. Johnson. Eric Johnson was there covering on behalf of Lake Ridge Schools. So you will see in the media more information about this inaugural conference, and we are looking forward to its expansion as the years move forward. Thank you again, Dr. Stokes, for the opportunity. Dr. The school board, thank you. And I will turn this back over to Mr. Suggs, unless you have something to add?
Just the draft agenda.
Oh, yes. Is that, that's under your report? Okay, Erin. Thank you.
As always, we like to give you a draft agenda for upcoming meetings. I do want to say, this is just the draft, so it is subject to change. So I do understand that at the last meeting on the draft, we saw the cell phone towers, but we do table things for various reasons if we want more information. So I want to say again, this is just a draft, but most of the things you see, you're probably getting used to them. I do want to share that one of our administrative reports is about special populations, or as some of you may know it as special education. So if you're interested in knowing what we're doing in our special education department, at our next board meeting, we will be talking about our special populations. So I did want to highlight that. We will also have our first reading for our finance template, so that's important to know. And we will have our action items, second readings for professional staff and the actual support staff. So with that, I yield back to our board president.
Thank you, Superintendent Stokes. Again, I'd like to thank everyone for your participation and your attendance. and your attendance. Um, you do us a favor by being here, and I would like you to encourage your friends and neighbors to attend as well. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Board Member Irving will motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Board Member Irving. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded by Dr. Woods. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A meeting is adjourned. Thank you again.